I will call this meeting of the Madison Board of Select into order. First order of business. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the minutes from September sixteenth.
I'll make motion approve.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the manifest payroll thirty-five thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Payroll liabilities ten thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Sounds payable fifty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents. Three hundred twenty-five thousand to the Madison Elementary School and for a total of four hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents.
Motion.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Jake, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Linda, I forgot, I I did not have a chance to review it, so instead of abstaining, I vote to not approve?
Okay.
Is that, that's how court outside works?
Yeah.
Public comment. We assume everybody out there is here for Albert Road, so. We're good. Alright.
Not everybody.
Alright. Not everybody.
Jake, Jake can say it too.
That's not what you're here for?
Dana was here and dropped those things off and said that he was gonna run an errand and come back, so.
Well. Dana's on the agreement. I guess we're starting, oh. Alright, first item will be Albert Road maintenance. So, we have an old agreement from twenty twenty-two. And there recently been some concerns, Josh, you went up there and looked at it?
Yes.
Major concerns, minor concerns?
I don't say there. It needs some work, I think everybody knows.
Yep.
There that it needs some, need some ditches and the turnouts need to be dug out and. It's pretty sandy and need some gravel.
Yep.
I don't know what the base is, so the other end, I imagine it's just bank run gravel, I don't think there's a big good base of.
Well, what happened was, I guess Joe used to blow a lot of boulders when he did his house up there.
Yeah.
So when I was cleaning it, trying to kick everything off.
Do you mind just stating your name for the camera, please?
Remember you said Alan Junior, oh, you said Alan Junior.
Thank you. Yep, you're good.
Do you mind if we read the letter of agreement, is that okay to do, just so folks are on the same page?
Yep, the original letter agreement was Giordano and is a driver. Uh, Board of Selectmen at their meeting on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two unanimously agreed to grant permission for repairs and maintenance to be performed on the class six Albert Road by you both. This agreement is in keeping with their prior agreement made with the late Joseph Pleitree, formerly of four forty-eight Albert Road. Maintenance repairs to be performed are to be in accordance with the best practices for road maintenance. The board grants permission for the use of an ATP on Albert Road for the sole purpose of maintenance, not for pleasure. The road is owned by the town of Madison and this permission may be discontinued at any time by the Board of Selectmen. Please be sure to contact me if you have any questions. So I guess the concern is now that some of Albert Road is washing out on the Moody Hill and this agreement isn't being kept. The maintenance isn't being done properly. Dana? So.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't answer good.
No, you're good, the concern was brought that this agreement wasn't being kept up because of the maintenance on the road wasn't being done properly. And there's a washout into Moody Hill Road and that's why everybody's here tonight. So we need to figure out a plan going forward as to how we fix the issue. And this agreement is between you and, I assume you're Dana?
Yes.
Alright, and Josh went up, Josh spoke before you walked in about canceling.
I wish.
So I guess the question is, how do we fix it?
Do you have, um, Josh would know what type of equipment would be needed, um, but do you have the equipment needed to do the repairs that Josh is recommending?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I just got the little machine, but if we had a, if I had to rent the excavator to do what we're gonna do, I'll rent it. What have we gotta do?
Um, it, once it's fixed up, I will, I will obviously figure out how to fix it up, but once it's fixed up, will you be able to maintain it going forward?
Yes, because once it was, once it was done, back when, let me do it, well, five years ago?
Yep.
We had the roller in there, we had the heavy rotor and we had a lot of sand, you know, that whatever that soil was coming up, I don't know what it was, but Coleman's got it. Patrick's, I want to recommend it, which is very good, but it's gotta be, once it's done, cleaned out the trenches and everything, it's gotta be rolled tight and then like you gotta do it every couple of years to keep that up. I mean, I couldn't tell you how many loads I got up there in the last ten years, but it just washed it down.
Do you need?
I think it, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, no, go ahead.
I think it's better now than when it was because the curse was so bad, like I was saying, when it rained, the holes were sixteen, eighteen inches on the sides. It was terrible, so now that a lot of the curse is off it and the water really, the sand's not going on the road right now. That big pile we seen down there for a couple of weeks drying out, I took that all off from the bottom up fifty feet. And now I got it all out of there, I cleaned it the other day. I think once it's maintained and done the way we'd like it. I mean, I'm up every weekend, I live on the track, so.
Yep.
I'll be on that road eight hours, it doesn't bother me. It's just aggravating the way it is now.
I think in their defense, I mean, we had a lot of roads washed out two years ago, and all that two year, and that we, you know, we were able to repair our roads and I think it took a lot. You know, we lost Kobe Hill, you know, and they lost that road that time and every time it rained after that, it never got brought back to a position where we could uh, they maintain it, you know, it went to the destruction mode and never got back to a point where they could just maintain it. And it kept washing out after that, so I think if they get back to a point where it was like it was maintained before, then they'd be all sad. I mean, this is still gonna be maintenance, there's still gonna be water washing in the road, that's never gonna stop.
Right, but just to try to mitigate the the vast majority of the sand and stuff washing into the.
Have you, would you, what, what folks think about if you were, if you were able to kind of come up with like write out a plan for them to, to?
I could, I could do, do, it's, uh, uh. I mean, I think you know what to do, I mean, you've said it all and, and, but it.
Yeah, like it. Once the trench's been maintained.
Yeah.
I know I can keep it up, right? I know I can keep it up, no problem, but just when, the way it is now and I can get ten loads of pull-up day tomorrow, I mean, the first rainstorm, we could pack it and everything else, but if the sides ain't fixed right and the runoffs and what's clogged with the pipes going across the road.
There's no ditches, I mean, that's.
But they do work, the runoffs do work.
Right, it's almost like a half pipe right now.
A lot of control.
Right, yeah.
And there's a runoff.
Can I speak up?
Yep, just please state your name to the camera.
Ted Ferry, uh, we just purchased four fifty.
Yep.
Uh, so I'm just looking, I'm just looking at this drawing that I think you put together or somebody else?
I did.
Dana.
Oh, you did, okay. It's showing, I, I think these are like skin offs for, for wires to release, is that what those squares are?
Yes.
So is that like an approved drawing from the? I, I went up and measured it. Okay, so I'm just, you know, so if we follow this and so all the water is not going down to the bottom, you know, I don't want neighbors on the sides to say, hey, now it's shooting in our property that this was an approved drawing, hopefully the town owns the road, that they could look at this and say, yes, this is what you should do.
Certainly.
Do you see what I'm talking about?
I know exactly what you're talking, those are turnouts and those probably have been there for years.
Yes, right.
And they're just, they've filled, they're filled up, they need to be dug out.
They need to be dug out.
The whole purpose of those, I'm sorry.
Go for it, you're good.
The whole purpose of those is so the water doesn't run out into the, you know, it's not going in the woods, those have to be dug out, you know, a few years, once they get filled out. You can even put some stone, a little bit of stone in there, that would help it, it's like a sump, it goes into the ground instead of running along the top.
No, I think it's brilliant, I just didn't want to make other problems doing that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How about the one at the bottom of the hill that went underneath the road? That's not there anymore.
No, we clean that out probably two or three times a year and really it's kind of, I don't wanna use that word.
It's shorter than this time.
We're kind of pissing into the wind every time we clean it out, because the next time it rains, it fills up again.
Yeah.
So, we didn't clean it out yet, so we're kind of hoping that you guys will fix the road up and then it'll, we can tinker that end up and, because we have to, you know, we dig it out, that's a deep, deep.
It is deep, yeah.
I think if everyone's in agreement, um, if you could just, even if it's just a checklist
Yeah.
of, you know, things that, um, the maintainers can do or should, you know, do and then you guys have something to go off of, so nobody forgets anything, because I always need a list or a checklist or, you know, like a written reminder, so that way, you know, Josh puts it in writing, you guys have it in writing. Um, it doesn't need to be a formal agreement, but just, you know, it's written down, so what needs to be done and then if Josh follows up, make sure that everything that was kind of on the checklist is done, that.
Yeah.
So.
Dana?
Yeah, when I, when I did this little sketch, um, close up with this.
You call them, what do you call those?
Turnouts. Turnouts, okay. One thing that happens, you'll notice the one on the right, two hundred feet up from Moody Hill Road, that does fill up. And then the water just comes right back into the road and then, and I'm wondering if it would make sense to have something that captures it on that side of the road and brings it over to the, the deeper one.
You, you could, there's a lot of things you could do.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's just all costs money, so what, what you guys wanna do, I mean, you could put a culvert underneath the road and, and put it over into that other turnout, that would be great, you can do, you could, instead of putting in sumps, you could put in, uh, turnouts, you could put in catch basins or, or dry basins or things like that, but you know.
So that's something that would be allowed if, if we come up with.
Yeah, and I'm not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think the town would require you to, I mean, that's, you might as well turn it into a class five road and pave it at that point, you know, so. You know.
I like that.
So I'm not, not.
Well, with that suggestion, I'd say with that suggestion is, I believe it's called the Betterman, um, assessment?
Betterman assessment, yeah.
So, the town would give you guys a dollar value of what it would cost to bring it up to class five specs. You would then have, I believe it's ten years to repay the town the cost, but the town would then maintain it, but it, there's, I mean, the, the number.
You would like that number.
The number would be astronomical.
Apple Dicksel.
Right, so that's, that's the only way you would get it to class five. Is if you all agree to, to pay over ten years, whatever that number is, you would split between the five of you and then go from there, but I think that that would be.
Unaffordable.
Unaffordable at best, yeah. Alright, so, we're here to decide whether or not we're going forward with this agreement, is my understanding. And to make sure that you all have met with Josh and have the concerns at hand and are going to make those repairs in the near future. Hopefully.
I suggest, um, they get together and come up with what needs to be done and perform, we give them a certain timeframe to perform the work and then we revisit the agreement.
Sure.
After the work is done.
Sounds like you've already met with them, Josh, though, right?
Yeah, I met Mr. Ferry, I think I met Mr. Giordano. Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Ferry. I have, I haven't met with you, but I, I met with these two fellows and, uh.
We're new to the game.
Yeah, so, um, I would be more than happy to do it again or, um, I, it seems like you guys know what to do and I would help whatever I can, you know.
So it's a realistic date for you guys to get it done, so I'm putting too much pressure on you, but.
Did they come up? Can we figure it out in a month, I think?
Yeah, we'll have to figure something on the.
It's like, cause two months is end in November.
I mean.
Like you're gonna want to do it, have it done before then.
What are you gonna send over here, you saying, put one over here, cross over today?
Well, just one, yeah, that's something I guess we can discuss, I wanted to know if that was something permissible first, then we, then we can discuss whether we can.
Yeah, that heavy rain we had the other night, I was up there, alright, nothing was on the road, I couldn't get a little bit off, so there was one on there. Alright, even with that hole filled in right now, the water seems to be going down and going somewhere.
Well, it's been drying.
I don't know.
Well, I think it's going in the ground.
The lava thing is like non-existent.
So high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just wrote it over, I mean, what are you gonna do, trying to straighten it out, that's all, but, but the water is running down the street now from the other two, if you notice. You look at the hot top along the side, maybe seventy-five, fifty feet going up to the right. You can see where it's being washed out, the hot top will be next and then water's somewhat transferred or something going on, because it never came down there, I never seen ten years come down that way. Maybe on the road, but never like it is, and that's making it worse that way. But in the past month, even better, we haven't had a lot of rain, but nothing's been going on that road in the few months I've been on top of it.
Alright.
You see it?
Maybe we can come to some sort of agreement that week, I mean, I, I think you might even have a hard time getting a contractor to get in there in that timeframe before snow, who, you don't know, so you don't know. And, um, so, I don't even know if you'll be able to get that work done before snow flies or, or freeze, but maybe if we can get it tinkered up just so it's good enough for the, the winter time, so I imagine you wanna plow it and stuff this way, it's gonna be real hard to plow, I would think right now, so.
Now plowing, you just won't even attempt it, right, one, like one pass up and down, you just won't do that at all.
Can't, we can't, I, I, we're.
Yeah, we're not allowed to by statute.
I would, don't, I'm gonna get me wrong, I would, but I, we can't.
So do we wanna do, like you guys meet together, the three of you, one more time and come up with a firm plan of action or?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, and then just, again, like, just write it down?
I don't, I don't foresee them having it repaired before the snow flies.
Right, but at least having that.
Look, give it so we can plow, so it's not running into the road.
Yeah.
The good news is, this time of year, it's less water runoff than, it's like spring is the worst.
You got spring you gotta worry about, man, and the freezing.
Well, once it freezes.
I don't even know if I should, I'll, I'll let you guys decide, so.
But Mr. Josh.
It would take us, it wouldn't take us very long, we could run the grader over it, I, I hate to say it, I know, yeah, and that, everybody's gonna be asking, but to get it through the, get us through the winter, you know, we could tinker that up in a half a day, just good enough. But it still needs to be fixed.
The problem is that opens a gate.
Yeah, it does.
That does open.
Right.
And not everybody even has an agreement to maintain, so.
And not everybody.
Right.
But if it came to an emergency, I mean, there's not too many people, construction companies have graders, I will say that.
Yeah. Cordell.
Is that something we could be billed for?
Cordell.
Do you know that keep it kosher or not?
So, with, we could bill for it?
Well, he did, not that so much as if the class six portion is damaging the class five portion, this town does have the ability to take action to save our class five portion.
And I knew that, that's why I offered. But I don't, that's the, that's the catch twenty-two, you don't want to open a can of worms, because I don't want to make it so, I mean, we have a lot of class six roads, a lot of people live on class six roads and I don't want to have people think, well, if I just don't take care of my road for a while and the sides affecting our class five roads, and then the town's gonna come fix it. But that's not what I'm offering, I'm not offering to fix it, I'm offering to get it kind of in shape a little bit, just so we can get through the winter, so then they can come and fix it.
What is that?
And that's an offer on the table, I'm not.
What does that look like, Josh, like what would need to be done to make it?
We could pull the ditches with the grader in no time, and, you know, it'd take us a half a day probably to go up to the top just to pull the ditches and then clean out those catch, um, shape it up, get a little bit of a crown in it. Um, and it's not very good gravel there, so it needs gravel on top, but I wouldn't put any, any material on it and dig out those turnouts. And obviously dig out that culvert at the bottom. So we might have a day's work in that.
Can we pile that sand, that dirt, whatever?
Do what?
Can we, when you dig it out, can you leave it in a pile?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're saying, so we, whatever you want with it, you know.
I have a question, so if we backtrack before that was brought up, when you said, when you, gentlemen were saying about you'd be able to take care of it in a month, a month and a half, what did that look like in your head when you were saying, were you gonna rent a excavator, get good material, because I looked at it too and that's just beach sand in my eyes and it's in a loose, there's no ditching, there's no rip rap, there's nothing, you're just shooting the water down onto Mooney, or not you personally, but Mother Nature, whatever. Um, so I was just curious if, when you originally were thinking that, were you just gonna go rent the stuff from Coleman Rental to the roller and the, and the excavator and then get some good gravel in there?
Yep.
Like three-quarter DOT and then roll it out and, and, and do some grading, so it is finding a ditch?
Well, we would.
Is that what your original plan is, because you're, I'm, I'm curious about the timeline where you were thinking you would or would not be able to do it?
But when I, I threw that month out, my thought was digging the turnouts, because
They do what?
The volume of water coming down.
Right, and you, it has to shed off somewhere else first.
Right, and that's, so that's why I thought, well, we dig those out, but then as far as putting the road in condition, no. But getting the water off the road by digging the turnouts.
Okay.
We could rent it.
It, it does, it does work, when we rented the excavator all the time with Joe and we did it every, I don't know, maybe four to six months, we, he got up there and we worked together. It worked, but the problem is, is on the left side going down, you got Mary and, I don't know, and sometimes the water will go down and she wasn't complaining, they're very nice, and the water will go down into her grass, I mean, what am I supposed to do, I mean? I don't have any answers for it, I'm sure you can try blocking, the force of that water comes out of that pipe is unbelievable. But coming down from what's his name, a park there where Joe was, alright, at the end of my road going in, that was, that is gonna be straightened out on his part, which he took care of his driveway coming down and did a good job, so I know he's gonna be putting work into that. Alright, and so if that's the case, it's really not bad from my entrance, I wanna say to y'all, alright, once we hit Ted's, his never gets really washed out, especially he's got it graded beautiful now.
Yeah.
The rest of me down right and left is the worst and there's a lot of, there's material that's just gonna be moved.
Right, so could you guys get it, get the turnouts dug and ditched on the, on the lower end before?
Winter?
Winter?
Since you have the excavator anyway.
Right, because that, I mean, the turnouts are great, but you really gotta ditch.
Alright, Josh's idea.
It would be nice to be able to get the road itself, but I was just, I was just looking at, when I, I was just looking at getting the water off.
Right.
I wouldn't do anything else, you know, we couldn't get, you know.
I'm not, I, I, my, my, my thought is, I'm not worried about bringing the road up technically, but if you could get the turnouts and the ditches dug and it keeps everything from running down the road for the most part, that would buy you time through the winter and then in the spring you could reevaluate as far as dressing the road up, I understand that this stuff takes time, it's not gonna happen, and especially with the fact that Mother Nature's getting ready to get mean with us.
Yeah.
But if, if you could get the, the ditches dug and the turnouts opened up, that I think would probably alleviate our concern as far as.
I'm gonna settle on this week, I said it already, I'm gonna be for the week.
Yeah.
Just moving and moving and it knows with all the rain, how it, it is diverting off, but I gotta, we gotta go down and turn on the left side and kind of put like a little, I don't know, maybe the bigger rocks right there to a couple of feet from the road, so it, it does carry, keep going and doesn't keep washing down, the water's gonna go, but doesn't keep taking the sand, I don't know, but we do get it diverting, we gotta do something with the with the cement on the side.
So should we just give them?
How they did on the main road.
Yeah, if you guys can get the ditches dug and the turnouts cleaned out before winter, we'll be happy. And then you guys can reassess fixing the actual road in the spring. Is that doable?
I think so. I mean, I don't want to put the onus on you, it's like.
No, I don't mind, I don't, I can't sit still anyone's.
You're doing a pretty good job right here.
Unfortunately, I'm, I'm not okay with Josh going up there, just because it opens a can of worms for every other class six town road in this town and it's just not
Agreed.
a good idea for us, as much as I would love to help you out, if I had a grader, I'd bring it up, and I don't. Uh, but if you guys can get the ditches dug, get the turnouts cleaned out before winter, that would make a big difference and then reassess in the spring.
Would the grader, if it is sandy, like would the grader, would the road handle the grader? Okay. I'm sure the grader could handle the road, just whatever the road could handle, having the grader.
That's not like.
Josh, you said the last time you went up the hill with the, you came by and saw with the grader and opened it up, I think you went up seventy-five feet?
Yeah.
It was beautiful.
Yeah.
And it really cut it down great.
One time, one of the, one of the rains we had and it came down, we, I put out and I just.
It helped out, it really did.
Yeah, we pushed the dirt out of the road up into.
You did a good job.
Alright, does that sound like a plan?
So we'll revisit the signing of the agreement until later, so we're getting a.
Until the spring, once we can get the road back up to
That sounds good.
Better standard.
Alright, can we, do you, again, timeframe, a month, two months, I, then I, I guess I'd, I'd hope that.
I think spring.
No, 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 but just to get the, the, the turnouts and the, the ditches dug.
Before winter. Yeah, they said before winter.
Yeah, so can we set a timeframe and then just again have Josh give the stamp of approval that it, he believes it'll get through the winter? Can we just close that loop, because the folks who still have to pass Mooney Hill in the winter?
Can we give you forty-five days to do the dishes and the turnouts, does that sound fair?
You're gonna dig out the one at the end of the road, right?
Yep.
Now, just going up, I think maybe fifty feet to right where that big pine tree is.
Yep.
Is it possible getting the machine in there and just, that's the big one.
We don't have one.
That's where there's, you push some boulders and I'm not gonna.
You have a meeting if you ask for it.
I'm on my second bucket now. I don't know if it's possible, I mean, I'll be there to help.
I'll take a look, take a look.
Can you have it done by November tenth?
We'll get it.
November, can we, can you have the ditches and the turnouts done by November tenth, forty-one days? Forty-one days from now, that's our next meeting.
To get the trenches cleaned out and all that?
Yeah.
I don't think that's a problem at all.
Alright, so we'll.
Few days of work, you just gotta stay on it all day and.
We'll have Josh go up and take a look and then just give us an update on November tenth, let us know what's all set and if that's good, then we'll revisit this in the spring and hopefully get the road back up into good shape.
And if in ten days from now, you go, oh boy, this is more work than we thought, just come to the next meeting and let us know and we'll figure out a plan B. Okay, we don't want you to get overwhelmed and stuck and, do you know what I mean, like, we'll, we'll come up with a plan B if, if you find it's too much, okay?
Alright, so I understand that you're gonna come up, once we get the clean outs off and everything else, it will come up with the grader and down?
No.
I'll patent you as well.
No.
You can't do that, you can't do that.
Unfortunately.
A for effort.
Well, what's, am I giving you a challenge immediately?
Does that open up a can of worms if we pay for it?
We're gonna see what Coleman's gonna get, so.
They might have a Bobcat with a grader blade on it.
We need a small bulldozer up there, that's the all grader.
Really?
With the eight-foot blade.
Yep.
Even a half a day, just taking the road to where we want it, get it done, and we can, you know, with the clean outs will be done, get that done, and we can work here. Get the machine with that bucket that moves and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Alright.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We gotta, we gotta do something, it's getting wet.
Give me November tenth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and necessarily have to be here on November tenth, but just give us an update before that.
We need to figure out.
I think I'm coming November, well, well, I guess we need to figure out the size of the next, maybe Josh.
Eighteen.
Is it, oh wait, oh, we're meeting on Wednesday, yeah, we're meeting on the twelfth.
Monday.
We're meeting, yeah, we're meeting on Monday.
It's a better instead.
Better instead, Tuesday, okay. It's in here, yeah, in the administrative.
Oh, yeah, no, I did read that, yeah.
Yeah, she read it, that was the problem, she read it too mean. Didn't, didn't get stuck in there.
Alright. I hate to be a pain, but we're gonna have to move on to the next agenda, I'm a nice. Thank you, guys, appreciate you coming out.
Alright, snow removal policy.
Alright, um.
Doesn't look like much has changed, except for the amount of salt.
Still your audience.
Some mosses up there.
I got money on the wall, just so you know.
We have those electric racks.
Tease it.
Oh, yeah. I've been stung more this year than I ever have.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, you're on.
I love those guys.
The tonnage of salt changed and then just swapping around some drivers and trucks?
Yep.
Nothing?
Is truck eleven, um, a CDL driver?
No.
Is it, is it a truck that requires a CDL, it's the two thousand five Peterbilt?
Two thousand five Peterbilt, yeah, that's, that would require a CDL, yes.
Does the proposed driver have a CDL?
Jim, Jim.
Bill? Jim?
Yeah.
No, he'd be in, I, maybe I messed that up, because that should be the.
You got him in Peterbilt?
Oh, that'd be truck three, or, no, uh, ten, should be truck ten. Should be truck ten.
The twenty twenty one international.
Oh, did you did you swap the?
Yes.
Bills in his truck on the list, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I got that wrong then.
That's alright.
We've done that for a few years, put another truck up there, cause it's it's so far away, that route is so far away from the garage. You don't can't carry enough sand or salt and.
Yeah.
So he gets up there and he keeps coming back, so. Put Jim up there, he doesn't have a CDL, but it works out good that he can drive truck ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Is truck ten the twenty twenty one international?
Yes.
Okay, so I see what I did, so it should be.
So you just need to swap, just swap the drivers, yeah, gotcha.
Some drivers, yeah.
Bill's, Jim, I got him on the wrong trucks, okay, alright, and then my bad notes. So then what's happening with the twenty twenty one international? Where did I land?
Jim's driving.
Jim's driving that.
Oh, sorry, then the Peterbilt.
That Bill's driving, I'm not driving it. Bill has a CDL.
So Bill should be here and I should be up there.
Okay.
Just swap the drivers with the trucks.
Okay, so they're doing diff- they do different parts of?
Yeah, so and that's another thing too, you got this mix of mix of sand and and hot top, so.
The area?
Just a distance.
You know, you bring up salt, you can't do the sand or the dirt, the gravel roads, so. One guy will, Jim generally does the gravel portions of it. And it's a smaller four wheel drive truck over the hills and bad parts and. Truck eleven doesn't go very good on hills, cause once you. Get out your sand or salt, whatever you're carrying in that thing, it just spins.
No weight.
Yeah, no weight. That's the truck, if we go with the. The all wheel drive truck, that would be the truck that we'd be getting rid of with that brand.
The O five, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't need a bus or anything, like that's nothing.
Where was the Western Star before?
Uh, it's on the forty, uh, Route forty one route.
Where was it before? What route did it do before?
It's always, no, it did East Madison Road.
Which route is that?
Or East Madison Route, yeah.
Route five.
Yeah.
So where was the Kentworth?
Uh, they swapped around, I think it was always Kentworth last year was on East Madison Road.
Yeah, I didn't change that.
No.
Yeah.
No, the only things that changed from last year to this year are the things in red.
Right, so the Western Star, I just was asked.
This is the new truck.
It's the new truck.
It's a new truck.
Okay, so it's being added, it wasn't used.
Yeah.
Last winter, cause it's.
No, we used it last winter.
Yeah, right, but this hasn't been updated.
Came at the end of the season.
And what was it?
At the end of the season, right, yes, right, this is, it was after this was updated, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's happening this season, okay.
A lot, cause that's yeah, we signed.
Cause we would have updated this last September, fourth, yeah.
The day out.
It's a timer, right.
It was exactly one year from the time we approved it to the time we got it.
Yeah. Do you need approval on this from us?
Uh, well, it's you're supposed to, there's a spot for you to sign.
Yeah, off the back of the first page.
So you're gonna make a motion to do it?
First page.
It's on the back page.
Yeah, uh.
Alright, I'll make a motion to assign it, cause that.
Make a motion to approve it with this swapped.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the.
Yeah, with my, I'll swap the drivers.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion's been made by Jim, second.
Just just swap the reds.
Second by Jake. All those in favor?
Alright.
Okay.
I'll just put it in the signature.
Yes, please.
Well, I can figure it out.
Solar array request for ETF.
And Noreen was gonna come for that and.
Right, right.
I'm not sure that that's the.
I I think. I think that her purpose was to redefine or become a working group, the old. Was it energy?
Committee.
Committee, they wanna just not be a committee, they wanna just be a working group so that it doesn't have to be televised and minutes taken. To try to figure out what it would cost to buy out the solar at the end of the ten years, which is at two thousand and ten? I mean, two thousand and thirty, sorry. Which is proposed at approximately ninety thousand and in the binder, she gave us a breakdown of what they would be asking to put into the CIP. But they were gonna work up as the group, cause my our concern was at the ABC was. What, how much is it actually gonna cost, this is an approximate cost, what did it cost at new, cause we don't have that information? What we, what will we get out of it for approximately the next ten, potentially fifteen years? And what does it cost to get rid of? Because right now with the contract we have, I believe at the end of the twenty five years. The company comes, removes the panels, leaves the the footers and the and the pipes, but takes the panels away. And as far as I know, there's no way to recycle or dispose of. Solar panels. So that would occur cost to the town, probably a hefty one, so. Her request, which I mean, she was not here, but they were hoping that we would designate them as a working group so that they can kinda get all that information up. Along with the CIP requests and then we would bring it forward.
Her and I chatted since then.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's good update for the meeting. Follow up, part B, um, her and I chatted and we kinda went over um. Over it and kind of priced and she showed me um how much we've saved each year. Um, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it was approximately. Under a thousand the first year. And then it was a good chunk of change, like seven thousand and five thousand the next two years. And then under a thousand the next two years is how much money we're saving. So. To pay ninety thousand in five years. Be a long time to get that return on investment.
Right, but that's not. The numbers we're getting is not the full price, we get a percentage of what we create. Because we don't own those.
Right.
So if we bought it out at ninety thousand, we would get the full hundred percent of whatever we make.
We, the way she explained it to me, and correct me if it's if I got it right.
That's that's the way she had said it to me, was that if we bought it.
Yeah.
We would get the rights to and all of the power from it.
You know something.
Well, the reason we only get like the thousand dollars or whatever is because the investors get the profits from it, so we're getting, we're only benefiting by a small amount on our.
Right. They're pretty much renting our land.
But if we didn't own.
But they're not even.
Yeah, no, they're.
Well, but what I'm saying is that what we're getting pretty much from them. The 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 bit we get is equivalent to pretty much, you know, they're giving us. A little bit so they can use our land, they're not renting it obviously, but. That's, but if we were to buy it for ninety thousand, we buy the contract out, we get all the dividends from the solar.
Right, so it'll cover all of our electric bills.
Right.
And plus the extra.
Right, the extra.
Amount there, I guess.
So you figure that into your ninety?
That's not the way we understood it when when I spoke with her after the meeting.
Okay.
Um, it seemed that again, I'm fully open to being wrong, but it seemed like. It pretty much powers town hall. In a good sunny, good sunny spans, it powers town hall and we get a credit on the bill. That goes towards all the other buildings that that are not powered by the solar, right, there it's not possible to power the other buildings. It is only.
We don't even, they don't even power this, they just get credits for it.
It's not, yeah.
It doesn't directly power anything, it feeds the.
It's feeding the system.
She seemed to think it did.
There's no battery banks here, so it can't feed, it feeds the grid, we get we get the money, so they meter us.
Feeds the grid. Okay.
Hmm.
And then. Uh, Eversource says, alright, you made X amount, we give you this much per.
Okay.
And then, so what happens is they do that with the owner of it and then they give us a kickback or whatever, I don't know what the percentage is, it's a small percentage. So.
It's that like.
It's whatever.
Six hundred a year, seven hundred a year.
Right, whatever it is, it's a small percentage of.
Yeah. Is the credit we're getting from?
It from the the comp- no, it's so, we get the credit, we write them a check, correct, isn't that how it works?
Eversource. It's on the Eversource bills.
Yeah, we pay them quarterly.
We pay them quarterly.
We pay them quarterly, like the the company that owns.
Blue Haven Solar, we pay them quarterly.
Yes, because we're paying them. Because the way the PPA is written, that's the agreement that we have with them, is that they purchased it. And we're basically, we're almost leasing it from them, we're paying nine thousand dollars a year to Blue Haven Solar. Because they purchased it, so it was like a. Purchased, it was like a lease to own. So that nine thousand dollars a year we're paying to Blue Haven Solar. Is because they bought it. So we're basically almost renting it from them.
But we don't get any of the benefits from it.
We get, when you balance it all, yeah, when you balance it all out.
This much, right. Right.
We get. When you, after we pay Blue Haven, after we pay Eversource, having it there saves us. Under a thousand dollars, three out of the past few years and then.
Right, there was, like I said, there was a couple higher.
Two years, two years we had good savings, cause the electric rates was so high.
Right, but if we bought it out for ninety thousand, we don't pay them anymore. Because we're buying it out, we would own it and we would get all the credits. That was the way it was proposed, so if we paid them ninety thousand in two thousand and thirty. Which is, I mean, obviously they're not gonna lose money, they're not stupid, they're business people, so they're like, they're gonna give us a price. And that was my question, even if we were getting the full, and I don't know what the full amount is that we get credited. Monthly from Eversource, would it, would it be an, would there be an ROI on that?
It didn't appear to be so when her and I spoke.
Right.
Um, so she was kind of thinking.
Against it.
Differently, she was, after having done more.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, after having done more research into it, having run more numbers that she showed me.
Yeah. Right.
She she's not sure, she's still gonna go back and read the PPA, because like you said, at the end of that.
Yeah.
Uh, term. Do they just come and scoop them up, or is there really they plan on us buying them, she wasn't quite sure of that.
Well, I think they're hoping we buy them.
Right.
But we don't have to.
We just, she was gonna.
Yeah.
Make sure she reread that PPA again.
Because if we if we uh, if we opted into an agreement where we had to buy out, I think that's a big oopsie on the town.
Right, so she's making sure that that's it, because they also degrade over time.
Sure, that and that was that was our concern, is that over the the first ten years or your best ten years and then.
Yeah.
Over the next few years, they degrade.
That was my question, what's the like expected?
Yeah. Twenty, they told her twenty five to forty years, every solar company I've ever talked to is twenty to twenty five years.
Yes, exactly.
So why would we even consider that?
Well, so we'd have fif- ten to fifteen years of good solar.
Right.
And I said, if it if it worked out.
It worked ninety years in. Thousand, huh, yeah.
Right, but what, right, like I.
Plus the cost of ex- disposal.
And.
Sure, and so that was my concern, is that I don't, I honestly going into it not having all the numbers, I wasn't in favor of it anyways. I was more in favor of maybe taking something similar to this. Breakdown and putting into the CIP for something later for us, whether it's anything as far as. Energy efficiency, it doesn't have to be solar panels, it can be used for anything in the energy bracket.
When I was, I was on the energy committee back then and I was definitely more in favor of insulating everything.
Yeah.
Super insulating everything, because I feel like that's the best return on your investment. Um, every building that we have.
Yeah, and the and the other thing too, is at the end of this year, there's no more federal grant money.
Should do the energy notice.
For solar, so right now you get thirty percent back.
Which is. Which is why they're trying to push to sell it to us too, because they're no longer getting.
Right. They're no longer getting that that kickback.
They're not gonna have a market to sell them to.
Well, that's ex- that's right, I think that you're gonna see solar drastically change.
So then why would you, why would you?
You guys have all just convinced me that I want nothing to do with it.
Right, that's that's where I was.
I I didn't doubt either.
At point one, right.
But that's, that's also kinda where Noreen is, at the at the time that we spoke with the information on hand at that point was different.
Well, which is right. Yes.
I have no real working knowledge of solar, but at this point, I want nothing to do with it, I'm just up there.
So another concern too is that, um, if we did buy them.
Yeah.
Revision right now maintains them, they're the company who installed them and then Blue Haven Solar.
Yes.
Like.
Yeah.
Like funded it.
Funded it, yeah.
So, yeah, they're making a bunch off those, the government tax credits, I. Noreen was also under the impression that it might now go, like the municipality might be able to get. The credits, it's just not going to the companies, she wasn't sure about that, that was something she was gonna look into. Um, but.
Yeah, I think I think, right, but again, I could be wrong, but I believe at the end of this year.
Yeah.
The federal incentive is gone across the board.
So, but based on what you just said, this little cluster of numbers can be completely fictitious. As far as value, because if there's nobody to buy them, these numbers could go down almost zero.
Right, right, so.
If there's no com- if there's no market for them.
But in 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 the contract, it states that 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 we could buy out at year ten for approximately ninety thousand.
Right.
They didn't have a number, but that's where she came up with these numbers as far as what we would need to set aside.
Yeah.
At that thirty, uh, twenty thirty mark to be able to purchase them and have the money on hand, that's that's kinda the breakdown she had for us.
Yeah. Yeah, so Blue Haven was actually looking at the company history and stuff. They were created after revisions started doing these installations for municipalities who couldn't afford to do a solar array. So they were created, it appears, for the sole purpose of funding solar arrays, which again. Great for the environment. But now we're in a weird situation, not so great for them without the.
But is it?
Without the incentives going forward, and so things just shifted.
And not and not when you have to dispose of them, they're the work they have to go.
Well, that's the thing, there's no, there's no, no way at this point to effectively dispose of or recycle, so they sit in a landfill and leach chemicals into the earth.
So I think re- recreating, go ahead.
Yes, and we, we, yeah, we and we visited a bunch of the wood boiler ones, um, at the senior housing, at the.
Hmm.
The county and I think Effingham runs on all wood and.
The biomass.
The biomass thing and it was pretty impressive.
Yeah, so I mean, again, she's not here, so.
She's welcome to put together a working group, I don't have a problem with that.
Right. Right, so I think I'd, uh, that was her thought in in the meeting for the ABC was that she would come and. So if we give her the okay, they can put together and then she'll just report to us with whatever. And then we can go to the, you know, the CIP.
But once they dig into that, what I wanna know at this point, after everything I've just heard is, do we have the teeth to make sure that these people come get those goddamn things?
If it's if it's in the contract, they're contractually obligated to come and get it, so.
I wanna know that that's in there.
We hope so, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, cause if it was done differently. And that wasn't, it is a big issue, cause they'll just sit there and decompose in our sandpit.
I don't think it is, I thought, I was on the board when we did it.
Yeah.
But I thought at the end of whatever twenty years or twenty five years that we owned it and.
Scott furry, like we didn't have.
Well, there's not gonna be anything.
But there's not, they're no good anymore, the way I understood it, I don't believe.
Right. Cause again, I I don't know what this kind, but I know typical solar leases. Like I think you can do it for your house, Massachusetts was big with them, and my buddy has one. And at the end of the twenty years, they remove them from your house. Once they're they're no longer really worth it.
I didn't hear the end of what you said.
I'm sorry.
I I just.
He doesn't think there's, there's.
I don't think there's anything, I I I'm very interested in the contract to to.
I would be too.
Yeah.
He thinks they just stay there.
Cause I thought that. After twenty five years, it's like, the way it was sold to me, I thought is, no, we owned it, that that, you know, so.
Yeah.
By then, somebody will come up with something to do with it.
None of words, and that, you know, it was sold to us that it was gonna last like twenty five to forty years, is what I thought. And oh, but after you can buy it early or keep it, you know, the full, the twenty years or twenty five years or whatever it was. Then you owned it and then we owned it, none of so.
Yeah.
So it's a good.
And at that time, I knew.
Which could be good or it could be bad, cause we have to get rid of them.
Right.
But I guarantee somebody will come up with, to do something with it and we'll be up the top.
Uh, spend twenty five years.
Do we have a copy of that somewhere in this building?
I'm sure.
That we can look at maybe and that I would be interested in seeing it.
Yeah.
Hmm, but, but anyways, moving forward.
If just one of you two gives Noreen the the okay to put together a working group and then come report to us with.
Yeah, I won't see her in. Till I don't know when our next, cause our next meeting is the twenty first, but we have to go to the annuals, so if you see her.
Hmm.
In fact, just let her know she's good to get a working group up and.
Okay, but is it, is it town sponsored?
Well, if you guys appoint people to it, then you you own it, otherwise they could just do something on their own, it wouldn't require.
Yeah.
That was kinda what we had thought, was just she could put the group, get a group of people and then just tell, kinda keep us abreast of the situation.
Okay, I think she want, I mean, the the hope, I think, if, kind of understand, was to revive and have an official committee again.
Oh, cause she told us that she was good with a working group.
No?
Oh, okay.
Cause.
They don't wanna record fifteen years.
If you do, if you have, they have, they'll have to have minutes, they'll have to record, but with a working group, they can just kinda draw up the information we need, I think.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
At some point, maybe moving forward, if there's gonna be some sort of. Purchase of something or what have you. But I don't know, the way she proposed it to us at the meeting, and correct if I'm wrong.
I don't remember, I think I went upstairs to help that lady.
Oh, yeah, you may have with the with the drunk driver, um.
Yeah.
I think that the way she said it was, cause I believe actually Sharon said it would be better if you did a working group. Because that way you wouldn't have to document every, you know, as far as televise and minutes and then you can report to, there to report to us.
Okay, so on one hand, they are working with a contract that the town signed?
They're not working with the contract, all we want from her is the numbers.
Do we?
No. So she's not, they're not doing anything with the contract, they're they're not changing the contract at all. All she was gonna do was bring us the numbers if the buyout made sense.
Okay.
That was, again.
Okay, so for this, for this specific piece of it.
Yes.
Just to get the information on that, but going forward, I wouldn't be opposed to having. Whether it's a working group or a committee, whatever, look at, like Nicole's talking, the insulation projects, we did that in our house several years ago. It was amazing, they gave us. They paid for the the energy efficiency audit, paid for so much insulation and then the rest we got on a two percent loan.
Did. I did it too.
So, and it wasn't, they wasn't, the loan was maybe four thousand dollars because they did so much, cause my house is that old.
Hmm.
Um, but if we, you know, for this building or, you know, other parts of of town to do those audits, and I would love to have folks. You know, who very much are dedicated to that.
Well, they're, I guess that they're willing to become in their own committee and handle all that stuff themselves.
The taste of, taste of range. If we're willing to. Appoint one, again, rev- revive it. Did it ever officially so?
It 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 only went. It dissolved in twenty twenty two, I think.
Did it dissolve or did it just fizzle or?
It's, it kinda.
Does it still exist?
I don't know.
I think it was set up specifically specifically for this project and then once the completion of the project, it was.
Do you?
Do you remember? It was, it was different ph- it was different phases, cause we were, we talked heavily about lighting and.
You don't know, is it?
And it was a.
What's that?
I don't either.
Yeah.
Um, and insulation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that, and that was like, we talked so much that, um, I think it was too much talking and no action and, um, but. And, um, but the, that didn't get, and that, that. My, I, I remember feeling at that time, if we just do at least the insulation, then we can revisit after a year of energy bills and see where we stand.
Yeah.
And, um, and try to figure out, you know, where to go from there, because we wanna see how much we could save anyway. Not to mention it makes the building, you know, cause you're just not wasting a lot, anything.
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely.
So, um, I know the school started to change some of their lighting outside, that was, the exterior lighting was a big focus, and I think. I don't know if it was before that or after that, that we, is when we changed out the streetlights and shut a bunch of them off.
So what led to the ball field?
We did do lighting here, we did, we did.
That's common.
In this building, yeah.
That's.
Library. We, we did a, a thing with ever source.
Yeah, there was some lighting and stuff updated.
The PSNH, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I was involved in the audit that I'm sure Joy got involved with, and it was, it was life-changing.
Yep. So at this point, just, it's a working group?
That's the way she, yeah, she, and like I said, if, if it gets to the point where, I think the working group's great for this, let's figure out this first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hmm, yes.
Get the, the point, the, appoint them.
And then if there's other issues and they wanna explore things, then we could go ahead and appoint a committee and, and do that, but I think for this here, let's just. Nail this down and then we'll move.
Yeah.
On the other side of that is, if you can get enough people in a working group that are interested in doing this again, then you have your committee.
Agreed.
Then you can have, you're right, we can appoint that committee at that point.
Yeah, yeah. I like it.
Cause getting people is.
I'm sorry.
It's very difficult, yeah.
Hard to volunteer, hard to get volunteers.
Alright. We're gonna drop all the solar panels off of Gosh's house.
Target practice.
Put them up on, uh, Alberoni.
You'll never notice under all that scene.
This is not what I wanted, this is what I wanted. Alright, we need to ratify the purchase of the voting machine, do we, we don't have it yet. Do we have it? Yeah, the issue for, for this, we obviously had a, a machine, the AccuBuild machine since ninety-six, I think. Long time. But we need up, Secretary of State needs a decision from this board updated. As of right now, technically, they only know that we have the AccuBuild machine, which is sunsetted.
Oh, so we have to do this in.
And when we, I sent them all the stuff, everything that we've done, but there's nothing in any of the language that we've done so far that mentions the machine that we bought by name. Cause when we appropriated the money, two models had been approved by the.
Right.
Uh, election law committee. But they were waiting, and we were waiting, didn't spend money until they were both approved. So long story short, uh, the ratification will identify the machine that we purchased. And we're only, instead of spending seven thousand dollars, we got credit through the state for half of that, so we're only spending thirty-five hundred.
Great.
So we have to do like a motion to say that we're gonna be using this image cast precinct two electronic.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I took the liberty of writing it up for you.
It's perfect, just read that off.
I get you. I will make a motion to memorialize, ratify and confirm all actions taken by this board in accordance with warrant article number ten from the twenty twenty-four town meeting. And the adoption of the provisions of RSA six fifty-six, four and forty. Regarding the purchase and use of one image cast precinct two electronic ballot counting device from, and to be supported by LHS associates of Salem, New Hampshire. This, the new device was delivered July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the LHS invoice was paid on the manifest dated August fifth, twenty twenty-five. The new device is intended to be used for the first time at the town and school election in March of twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you good?
Perfect.
Done.
Alright.
Adam. Yeah, sorry, before I forget. You were talking about the streetlights, the lights and that, the light on the front of the lower garage, and I've got, uh, I don't wanna say a complaint, it's been mentioned to me several times. And some other guys that it's, I don't know if it's on a. Motion, or I know we changed it when we did that energy audit thing, but the guy across the street, he's measured me, it shines right in his. Living room or his bedroom all night long.
It's solar voltaic now, rather than motion, he'd like to see it on motion, so it only lit up.
Yeah. And I don't blame him, I wouldn't want that streetlight blaming, so I just. And, but it's, it's, it's connected to the, the Madison television alarm system or something, we've had it looked at.
Awesome.
Oh, boy.
So I, I just wanna get permission to try to get a electrician or somebody or to make it so it's.
Motion.
Motion, not. Shining in the guy across the street's living room at one o'clock in the morning.
I think it's the bedroom, and that's what bothers them.
Yeah.
He better rip my blackout curtains from now.
Might be cheaper just to buy some blackout curtains.
He's, he's asked me, yeah, well, he's asked me like three or four times.
Yep, now I'll have somebody take a look at it, and motion makes sense, no reason for. Burning electricity when it's not being used.
Yeah.
Yep. And, um, does this involve Mad TV at all, or?
I, I, that's, I don't know, that's why I don't know.
Can we check with them?
Yeah, so, does that light, I don't know, it's connected in the alarm system or something, is what I was told.
Right, but I think if you went motion, it still feeds constantly.
Okay.
The motion switch will turn on and off for the light, but it should not interfere. Again, could be speaking out of turn, but it normally wouldn't interfere, like if you switch to a motion, cause it's constantly fed, like a normal light. But then the, the switch will turn on in the motion to turn the light on.
On, on that hill, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have them take a look at it.
Kasia, do you know anything about it, or?
I'm not sure how it affect, you mean, is how it affects like inside the actual?
No, if it's, cause he said it's tied, you have a, sounds like Mad TV has an alarm system on that part of the garage.
We do.
So.
I don't know, you know.
Kind of be.
Somehow it's that tight?
I, yes, I don't know.
How did you find out it was tied in, or who, did you just look at it and you could?
I guess, uh, before my time, I guess he complained about it before, and we had somebody look at it, and they say, yeah, it's kinda tied into the alarm system. I, I don't know, that's what I heard, so I wanted to.
Is that the only light that it's outside of that door?
Yeah.
That's the only thing, we, sometimes, a lot of times where they're really late and there's no light.
They'd be motion activated, so, when you walk in front of it, it'd come on for you.
They would just change it to motion activated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we pull in, pull in the.
I thought it was, like, I thought it was motion activated.
No.
I don't know, if there's a spider web on it, it's just being activated.
Sun up to the.
No, it's, it's, it's solar activated, when the sun goes down, light comes on.
Yeah, it comes on and.
Yeah, have someone come take a look at it, so you can see what we can do.
And if.
Every time I swear words, I just.
Yeah.
Now you have a pulsating light in this bedroom.
Yeah.
Still light, um, so yeah, I guess if it's tied, can you just check maybe with Asia or Hope or Doug or whomever would know whether or not. It's tied into a security system that is up to the purview of Mad TV and, okay.
I'll figure it out.
I'm, I highly doubt they're gonna know any more than the electricians, it's gonna come look at it.
Well, if it's tied into a security system, they will, cause if they're paying a security company to.
Oh, they're not, we are, okay, yeah.
Okay, so it's, so it's not Mad TV's security system, I guess. No, it's, it's a town building, so we pay, yeah, the monitoring on it.
Yeah. Just on the door.
It's Lakeside Security that pays the monitoring on, so I don't know how it got wired, that's the thing.
Okay.
That's why we want the electrician.
No, it's our, yeah, it's all our stock.
Take them, take a look at it and see about searching it, yeah.
Ten bucks, it probably has something to do with the power, so, they, they didn't want you shutting it off.
And then check with security system too, if it's somehow linked to the security system, obviously check with them too.
Guarantee you.
Jimmy?
I don't mess with electricity.
Huh?
I don't mess with electricity.
About my pay grade.
We do it once anyway, if you do it wrong.
Alright, Police Department of State of New Hampshire Department of Safety Grant Agreement, we do this every year, Chief couldn't be here, Vic's here.
Uh, yeah, so you should have two things in front of you, the thicker package is the highway safety grants that we do every year. Uh, the clicker ticket, DUI enforcement, speed enforcement, uh, scratch over, pull over, that stuff. Um, then the smaller one is an amendment or an extension, which is a seventy-five, forty-five grant for equipment. Um, that is for a new radar unit for the new cruiser. Because the one we, we're gonna put in it is, I think she said thirty years old, I think. I know it's been in at least three cruisers before this one, so it's pretty old, it's a Golden Eagle, Jim.
Easy on that kid.
It's not old.
I can remember those are state of the art now.
Uh, so the state of New Hampshire, uh, they'll cover seventy-five percent, so. They don't cover any of the installation, just the equipment and the shipping handling. Uh, number breakdown for that is. Uh, twenty-three hundred forty-eight dollars, seventy-five cents, of which the state would cover one thousand seven hundred sixty-one and fifty-six cents. So that leaves us with five eighty-seven nineteen to pay, plus two hundred installed, so a.
No brainer.
With that twenty-five hundred dollar unit, we would be all in for seven eighty-seven nineteen.
Yep.
Yep.
And this is for the, this would go into the new cruiser?
Yep. Hi, you're back.
Yeah, right.
Right back here, back on, nope, back on the left, they're behind us. Uh, no, actually Mo, it just left.
No, oh, we're good.
Yeah.
I did.
Sounds good to me.
Alright.
And what are the conditions, like what do we have to do?
Put it in the car.
It should, yeah, it's just, it's, we, we pay upfront, you reimburse.
But do we even have to do that?
Do you, we just have it in the office?
Yes. Okay, so that sounds good.
Alright.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the terms of the highway safety grant as presented in the amount of sixty-nine hundred dollars and the amended. Grant terms as presented in the grant agreement amendment notice for an adjustment grant limitation of eight thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars, fifty-six cents. With select board chair myself authorized to sign all documents related to the grant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you have clean copies of these items? Oh. Taxi shop lease exhibit C twenty twenty-five Tahoe Cruiser, this is for the cruiser itself, my understanding is. It is having the.
The cruiser.
The new one?
The new one is having the.
It is currently up, being upgraded yet.
Up, up and done, yep, so this is the amount they payment for the, the full cruiser itself.
Yeah, that's, uh, it's, it, we, Jim, or Chief, sorry. We've been in contact with them through the whole thing, it's coming right along, it should be any day now. And then once he comes back, we'll get it, get the, uh, letters put on it, and the radar put in, and we'll be on the road.
Yep.
Perfect.
Good.
Alright.
That was a warrant article, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
No, it's fine.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, yes, if you could, just say that you're gonna sign the new schedule C to pay the non-. Cover my budget.
Alright, I will make a motion to sign schedule number seventeen, exhibit C to pay for the twenty twenty-five Chevrolet police Tahoe cruiser.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the fifty-four thousand is for the car itself, done and done, to the Chevrolet dealer, okay. And there's actually. Oh, yeah, there's sixty-five dollars and thirty-one cents that we didn't use that will go towards next year's payment, so.
Perfect. Saving money. That's it.
Alright, ETF plus. Three and. Three. And four.
I think it was the one, that was large.
I have your wording in them somewhere. The, um, trustees are having a meeting next week, they always have it like the second Thursday, so I'll be able to get these to them and.
Alright, do you need a motion for each one of these?
Yes, please, I put a, I put a cheat sheet in each one for you.
That's alright, we'll get there.
Oh, yeah, right on the back, right on the back.
Alright, so this first one is.
Did you not get one?
Did I not?
Mine's in a different order. That's alright, we're on the land one here.
Okay.
Oh.
Yep.
I was looking at that earlier, I think Linda did this on purpose, because this stuff was in backwards order from you guys, so. She's not messing with me. Alright, the first one is, I make a motion to request the withdrawal by the trustees of the trust funds for three thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars for the land acquisition and conservation. From the land acquisition and conservation purposes capital reserve fund to reimburse the general fund for the legal expenses incurred. For the legal review of the chain of bonds conservation, please, and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, my second one is Avatar assessing. I'll make the motion to request the withdrawal by the trustees of the trust funds for seventy-three thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars from the assessing expendable trust fund. Or reimburse the general fund for the expenses related to the contract with Avatar Associates for the twenty twenty-five revaluation of the town.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this how much we owe them for the year, or for this big giant? This only, uh, it's gonna be a hundred and nine thousand altogether, that's right, yeah, so this is, do we have any invoices left, or? We will, we'll, yeah, it's gonna end up costing us, but I just wanted to get the money back into the general fund to kind of have a better idea of what the budget's looking like. So how much is left in the ETF? There was, after the seventy thousand? Yeah, after this. Forty or fifty thousand, I think, it's enough to cover it. It'll be like just enough? Pretty much, it's gonna cover the whole, yeah. About, okay. Okay, thanks.
Do, do, do we have a, like a contract with them? And do, in the contract, are they supposed to like answer the people's calls and questions? I'm just curious, cause myself along with hundreds of others are waiting to hear from them.
Well, we haven't got their numbers yet.
Right, I know.
So they haven't finalized.
Yeah, they were supposed to respond, they said to everyone they were gonna respond individually to our concerns.
Oh.
And that was in August.
I don't know, I know he had, like.
Or July, I know.
Couple hundred appointments, if there was a change to the assessment.
Yeah.
The way I understand it is, once they finalize the numbers, letters were gonna go out to the people whose assessments changed.
Okay, he said we were gonna get a letter in two weeks to let us know, and that was like two months ago.
So that's your conversation. Oh, yeah. Yeah, no. We don't, they have.
This is curious, and other people were asking me, and I'm like, I don't know, I don't, you call that number and nothing answers.
They haven't finished our numbers yet, cause believe me, I'm waiting for them too.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll make a motion to request the withdrawal by the trustee of the trust funds for seventeen thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. From the short-term rental legal expense expendable trust fund or reimburse the general fund for the legal expenses incurred defending or enforcing the zoning ordinance. In respect to short-term rentals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Do we have a balance in that?
That's per the amount that's been pulled out of it.
Uh, no. I don't off the top of my head, but I wanna say there's probably well over forty thousand dollars left over.
Out of a hundred?
Uh, we only did.
Or eighty?
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, how much did you say was left on you? I wanna say over forty thousand, off the top of my head. Okay.
Alright, one more. I will make a motion to request the withdrawal by the trustee of the trust funds for seven thousand dollars from the transfer station capital project expendable trust fund. To reimburse the general fund for the expenses incurred for container pad and ramp at the transfer station.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Old business, last meeting we talked about.
Cement pad transfer.
Potentially putting a container up here and getting rid of the dumpster, they've got us a quote for a, an eight yard, ten yard, ten yard container.
Ten yard.
Uh, quoting it at five thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, right now we pay two thirty a month for that dumpster. So this thing would pay for itself in two years.
In two years.
What are our options for just? Having, so most cleaning companies, like, you know, when they clean a house or something, they just bring it themselves, they're, they're, you know, they take out the trash and, and bring it to the dumpster themselves. What are the options for our cleaning company just also removing the trash?
I don't think that's the only use of it, we're using it for the town garage and.
PD uses it.
PD uses it, things of that nature.
Library for, um, Moose Mountain only charges us sixty dollars to come in and clean the, the building every weekend. I mean, I'm sure that would go up if we would expect them to take, cause they take all the trash out of here and put it in there versus taking it with them and getting it to the transfer station. Alright, so we're using it for more than, like, are we using it for more than just? Like waste trash, like just, you know, your typical.
A little trash trash.
Oh, you gotta use it.
Like, you know, like, like the.
Well, the rec's using it.
Rec uses, old homewiki uses it.
Did softball and stuff use it, get to use it?
They're not supposed to.
No, not near.
That's not the way it works.
Better than the garbage on the ground.
Yeah. Is it, I guess, is it basic household trash, so to speak?
Yeah.
For the most part, I mean, unless there's something odd.
Yeah.
I mean, I threw a slip and slide in there the other day, and we can call that basic household trash, but.
La 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 la, did you?
That was for the rack.
It was for the.
Yeah. No, he didn't do it himself, it wasn't personal.
I don't, just trying to.
You would talk away once a month and it's full every month.
The dumpster?
Yeah, and this, that's a eight? And this, that's a eight, is that right?
I think it's a four, five.
Oh, is it that small, all right.
So is it that small, all right. So this one would stay for a while with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
And then we haul it, just, we just take it to the transfer station.
Right.
And dump it.
And dump it out of our own truck.
No, I just mean, is it possible, like, at the end of a week, one of us, so to speak, or just somebody within town, just brings their trash over? Like, on a Friday morning when the dump opens, we just dispose of our own trash.
Where does it save for the rest of the week?
In trash, in the trash, in the building. And then the end of the day.
That might scale into it.
We had, we did, we went, well, when it was full in August and we left the trash in the closet up front, the.
No, I mean, like, even like on a Friday, I don't know, like, would the cleaning company comes on a weekend?
They, they come in the dead of, I don't know, they sneak in.
I never see them.
Little elves.
They're here on the weekends sometimes, see, when it's.
Yeah.
So on a Monday morning, then, just somebody runs over to the dump. Jimmy, I'm just, I'm trying to just see what our options are for saving money, just.
Well, I think we're gonna run into a slew of issues if we don't have something out there for, for rec, for old home week, for the DPW, for anybody.
So you're just ready, do you wanna own it or do you wanna rent it?
Right, I mean, at least with owning it, in two years, you've paid for it.
Owned it, you gotta spare for the dump.
And you're gonna have it. I mean, that, that can, especially just being used here, that container will last.
Forever.
Forever.
And how's it gonna be emptied? We're still gonna.
They're gonna, so Dave will haul it.
Dave will haul it right into the transfer station, not as, it's a roll up.
Says with the hook, right?
And then haul it back.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's designed specifically for his truck.
And then haul it back, just.
Right, we just haul, right, haul, dump it and bring it back, yeah.
Once a month hauls it down over, empties it, hauls it back.
Which, I mean, he's doing anyways.
So no more garbage feet. After that.
Right, it would, it would save us the, and again, it, it went, it went to two thirty this year from, what, a hundred dollars or something, so who, next year, probably could be.
No, don't even, I know, believe me, I know.
Right, could be three fifty, you know, so, I mean, it would probably, two years max, it'll pay for itself. And it could be sooner if they, it were to increase their fee. And I think, I think it's a nece- a necessity. I mean, with the amount of trash, I didn't realize that that fills up in a month. Like, that's a pretty decent sized dumpster to be filled up in a month. And it would be.
Fill it in this, uh, July and August, we actually call them an extra time.
Yeah.
To come take it. So they actually take it twice a month in July and August.
Can we lock it, whatever we get?
Yeah.
There's sliding doors.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a covered one, like, the one at the transfer station, just a smaller version of it, so it'll have the sliding doors you can lock and.
So we can reach into it, so people can reach into it and throw garbage in. It's not gonna be one of those big tall ones.
I just mean, make sure that the general public isn't.
Yeah.
Isn't it?
I, I mean, we, I don't, we don't have it in the budget this year, but I'd like to budget for it next year, I think.
I think it would be great to put in the budget, just, I mean, to save.
Wow, that's the thing too, is by budget time, is this thing gonna go up in price?
When did it?
This was just quoted the twenty fifth.
I would hope not, but.
I don't know, you know, who can tell, that steel print, you know.
Right.
I don't know. I did ask them, they said we could have it in two weeks. They're not, they're, they had to talk to the fabricators, cause they're gonna put the cover on, cause they have the boxes, you know. It's just putting the top on with the slides and all that stuff.
Yeah, this would definitely go on in, as a warrant in May, I would think. Or not warrant, cause it's, uh, every March.
As much as.
It would be.
Cause it's how mu- it's, it, does it have to be a warrant article or would just be, have to be added to the budget?
Budget increase.
Budget and DPW is budget.
Yeah.
Just take out the money they're paying for the dumpster now.
It wouldn't even really, it would be a little.
That's what it wouldn't be.
Government maintenance, really, cause it is.
Yeah.
Gemma building.
Yeah.
Gemma building maintenance is what I've.
Yep.
I think that's where.
And that's where the.
You're paying over two thousand now to have it taken out, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're paying.
There's half of it right there.
Twenty seven hundred and sixty dollars a year to have it all the way.
So there's half of it.
Right.
Okay.
We add another, another half.
I like that, yep.
Yep.
So we put it in the budget for next year?
General government building, yep.
And pray to the steel gods the price doesn't go up between now and then.
We can also see what, how things are looking in December.
I was just gonna say, we're at the end of the year.
Cause, if, cause if you wait till, you're really not supposed to buy anything, not necessity, until after town meeting, so you're gonna pay for another three months, you know, of dumpster.
Month, yeah.
Right. But we have it in the budget.
Next year, hoping that there's no snow for them to be able to actually bring it and put it where you'd want it.
Right.
Yeah, we'll look at it in December and see where we're at and if we can swing it, we'll.
Try to be there.
Do it. All right, so after last meeting with Tia, Linda reached out to DNCR and Lady Joanna is coming to hang out with us on October twenty eighth.
She was busy on fourteenth, so I did offer that first.
She'll be here at four thirty, we'll put her at the top of the agenda. We'll get a little bit more information on the rail trail and that sort of thing. The agreement that they made with the private property owner is in there and I would imagine that is public knowledge through DNCR anyway.
And she did ask if you have any specific questions. If we could get them to her ahead of time, she'd be happy to make sure she has answers.
So if any of us have specific questions, get them to Linda so she can forward them to Joanna ahead of time. All right. Nicole, do you have a list today?
No, I haven't gone to a meeting yet.
Joy?
All right, so, um, CIP, CIP committee is meeting October, Thursday, October ninth, I think nine thirty AM. The official members, um, it's being led by Tia Gagnon, um, as the representative from planning board, so she's, um, considered the guest, will likely be voting, or I guess is chair or whatever, because it is um, the pur- under the purview of the planning board. Um, I'm representing the select board, Sharon Schilling will be representing the budget committee. A couple of, um, members of the public have, um, shown interest in at least attending that first meeting to kind of see how it's gonna go. So, um, looking forward to that. Mad TV has already, um, coordinated with Tia to record it. So we were, um, being, Tia was asking if we can take our, if we should take our own notes, that way we're not, you know, imposing on, or asking if we will be taking our own notes, we're not imposing upon Kate and Linda, cause it is, I think we see it as more of a working group than a decision making group.
Yep.
So, like, at the advisory budget committee, we'll just be advising on, you know, kind of the, I don't know, like, that's, I think, how we, when Tia and I spoke about it, that's how we kind of perceived it, was just as a as a working group effectively, but still recorded by Mad TV. And just take our own minutes.
Yep.
Does that sound? Sound about right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Again, members of the public, if you wanna work on exciting things like big giant spreadsheets, come on down.
Lots of numbers.
You said it was nine thirty?
Yeah, uh, let me double check, I think I put it on my phone. And I saw an email today that Tia had, um, put out the notice in respect, requested if Linda was able to, to put them, the notices here in, in town hall, and then she was gonna put them on the, uh, at the post offices and stuff.
I already put them up.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so yes, October ninth, Thursday, nine thirty AM.
Here.
Here at town hall, um, the CIP committee will be meeting. If I remember, Linda, I might ask if you were able to print out the big sheets.
Do you mind emailing them?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah. You don't remember from?
Oh, well, I wanna make sure I have the right one.
I have to look back six months to see, yeah, to see what we had six months ago, yeah. So, thank you. All right, that sound good? Okay. Um, and then, um, folks were approaching me about the, um, speed signs. I couldn't recall if Chief had mentioned that he was, you guys were getting like the ones that clip onto existing speed signs. I know the trailer is out and I love seeing the trailer out, and I also like the reminder myself. Take it down a notch, um, cause some of our roads feel like they should be above thirty, but appreciate the signs, the reminders. Um, are we getting ones that, like, attach to speed signs, like, existing on signs?
I won't speak for him, I know I've, we, me and him have had conversations about them. You, you see him all over the, like, if you come up one place through, through Eaton right by the door.
Yes.
That's, I believe that's what he's talking about.
Yes.
Um, uh, I'm not sure where he's at with that.
Okay.
In relation to budget or any grants bill or anything. I, I, we, we haven't spoken on it in three months, so, but he, I do know he was looking into it.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, folks are asking specifically about the curves around Silver Lake when it goes from forty five down to thirty five around Nichols Beach and stuff, cause, um.
I don't know if we could put those.
Oh, right, cause that would be state, yeah.
Yeah.
So it did remind me, yes, thank you. Um, it did remind me that there was a conversation, I must think it was last year, where a resident came and spoke to the board and I believe they asked that we just send a letter to the state, asking, and do we ever hear back?
We did.
Never heard back.
Okay. Would, would the board be amenable to sending a follow up letter? Just to ask their, whatever the letter was, whether we're asking their thoughts or asking them to lower the speed there to thirty miles per hour?
I'm not, but I'm not the only one here.
Do you remember what the exact, was it a request for them to do it or a request for them to look at it?
It was a request for them to lower the speed.
And put a crosswalk in.
And put a crosswalk in.
Oh, okay.
At the beach, I wanna say it was included in that, or something. But it's been, it's been a couple, few years since they came. Two years ago, two summers ago.
Was it that long ago?
Twenty twenty three.
Yeah, it was a summer or two ago.
Okay.
It wasn't last summer, so I don't think it was summer before.
Would be the.
So possibly a compromise might be to ask their blessing to allow us to attach one of those to the existing, rather than lower the speed limit or put it in crosswalk or whatever. I mean, crosswalk's a good idea, don't get me wrong, especially at the beach, but, um, but maybe to say, is this okay if we are getting those, can we put one there? I don't think they'll really care.
Cause I know that they had one, I don't know if Ospey had one on forty one.
That's Tamworth.
Or Tamworth, whatever, one, yeah, Tamworth had one on, on forty one, so.
Tamworth, yeah.
But you know, has it on, on one fifty three?
Yeah, so I don't know, I, I don't know how they get that through the state. I.
Yeah.
They hanging right there in, in forty one down in the Tamworth section.
Talk with the chief at the next meeting about where is that.
Yeah, that's true.
Yep. So, I'm sure they're gonna let you do it. I'm sure.
Who's gonna complain?
Anything the state doesn't have to pay for that we did.
Right, they, they might be.
Ospey puts his trailer all on sixteen all the time, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and so I had for today, thank you.
I think you find it's a permanently fixed one that you can't pull out.
Right, I think so too.
The trailer.
Trailer and those are temporary ones we hang on up post, yeah.
Jim?
Uh, two things. Now, I got two guys here. Those, um, for the master plan, those surveys, I think you have some printed out at the front desk.
Yeah.
Can you grab some, had some of the guys at town to just read them. They gotta go over that survey for the master plan, what they think is important. I sent Linda sent out an email for me, but if you didn't get it, it's just part of my job is for you guys to get one done, and you guys to get one done. And you get your own, I think. You are all set, cause of Jimmy, but I gotta do the highway department. It's just, um, what you wanna receive ranked as far as what you think's important, as far as the town vision for the master plan going forward, you know, it's, it's, it's a whole printed out survey, um, I don't know how many pages it is, to be honest with.
So you're just asking, um.
You guys just fill it out and get it back to me, so I can.
Different parts of town to fill out the same survey that, that, but it's representing, like, departments of the town.
Yes. Yeah, like, I had to get the selectmen to do it, the highway crew to do it.
Fill out the same survey that residents fill out. Okay.
And just, that way, if, if they can, if they don't want to, they don't have to. You don't have to do it.
Only for people that work, uh, live in town?
Live in town, yes, yes, and don't, most of them will live here, a couple don't.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, just, uh.
Jim?
Jim and Dave.
Yep. So then, well, they don't have to do it, it's not like it's mandatory, but if they'd like to, cause we gotta get them back so we can get it in.
I would think it's a good idea too, even if a department head doesn't live in town, for a department head to kind of weigh in on their vision of, of kind of.
They want town residents.
That all residents, all.
If you guys could do one, get it back to them. If they're done, just stick it in your box.
I'm, they also have an, the online option, though. Right, they still have an option online to do it.
I don't do one.
I know, but it's for folks that might be more inclined.
I don't blame you.
That's why I.
Than the, the one that's up on the counter?
Yeah, that one, take that one.
Okay.
Unless, if you haven't done them already.
You done it? I think Linda has it.
I started to fill it out.
Okay.
But I didn't like the.
Didn't like it?
And email and.
You don't have to put all that in.
No, in the online one, it won't let you keep going. That's why, that's why I'm like, this is a good.
Well, don't do it, you don't feel like. You don't have to, just, I'll just need them back and, and, you don't have to do that, you can remain them on if you don't want.
I erased online and wouldn't do it.
Do it anonymously.
But what I just. Yeah, you have to do it in paper to do it anonymously.
Dan, if you start it.
What?
If you start it and don't finish it, it's noted that you started.
The online one?
Yeah.
You can just do clear form.
I don't know, though, because I know someone who started it and didn't finish it, and then got a comment that, oh, you.
Started and didn't finish? That's why we don't do online.
But I think if they had clear form, it would have cleared it out.
Oh, maybe.
Nobody's gonna, no, I just closed out.
But they don't have to put all that stuff in, just.
Frustrating, I really liked the question.
Fill it out, stick it in my box in the room there.
Cause I did, I started to fill out the paper one, actually, when.
Okay, if you hand them out to the guys and.
I get enough emails.
If they can. Yeah, do that. Second thing is, I think there's an update on some of the lights.
Yes, I kinda have Jake pulling some strings for me, so.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, so I, I talked to my brother, who is an electrician, and he put me in contact with the gentleman Chris at, um, Rockham Electric, I believe, is an outside salesman. He actually called me today, I'm gonna call him back, um, try to get him to meet with us the fourteenth. Is that right? Tuesday the fourteenth is our next meeting?
Yes.
Um.
Is it?
Yeah.
Tuesday the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Yeah.
We're not even on the board.
Nobody loves us.
It is.
Um, but yeah, so Tuesday the fourteenth, I'm, I'm gonna see if he can either meet Tuesday the fourteenth or Tuesday the twenty eighth at three to walk the ball field. So he can figure out what we need, how many we need, give us some options, kind of work up an estimate as far as what that would cost, and then from there, I can take that and give it to my brother to give us an estimate, just to get, kind of just an idea of where we would be numbers wise for the lights on the ball field.
Would, would it be a consideration to somehow reach out to, I know, I can think of at least four young father electricians in town. Um, if we, you know, offer to do the trenching and the conduits and then pull the wire to come and do the rest and.
I think.
Get some help with that.
I think we, right, I think what, the idea was to just get an estimate.
Yeah.
And then see where we can, I know you were gonna reach out to Eversource, Mike, and look into that as far as what they would do for us, getting the power. And, yeah, I think what, I, this isn't like, we're getting this and we're gonna do the job.
Right, yeah.
It's to get us a bearing and then see what we, as the town, can do.
Yeah.
Trying to.
To us, to assist the, the cost, right?
Process, yeah.
But just gives us kind of a, a starting point, so we can say, all right, this is where we are, we wanna be here.
Right.
What can we do to get us down there?
Yeah.
I had remembered at one point, seeing it in the, in an annual report, you know, in memory of Bruce Brooks, and then at the bottom, you know, send donations to, you know, Go Hill. I don't know the address, um, or who owns the address. I assume it's a family member, but do, was that, so it was in the town report, like, did, did that turn into like a ball field lights fund for the town at some point, or was that just individuals? Like, how did, how did that work? Town, the distance, it was in the town report?
I don't remember.
Before my time.
Yeah, I don't remember it being in the town report myself.
It was in his in memoriam thing. I remember there was a picture and there was a text underneath. So, you know, in the beginning of the town report, every year we do the in memoriam.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there was one for Bruce Brooks, and at the bottom it said, you know, send donations to this address at Go Hill, so I didn't know if that was, I, I didn't know how it worked.
It was already, I wanna say that was bef- for me.
I think you're right, I think it was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, yeah, that was before you, yeah.
Okay, I was. So I, I don't know, I can look.
Okay, yeah, just see if there was ever an official account created or, Mike, do you know?
At the town level? I don't think so.
So it wasn't a town thing, it was just a private donation thing? Do you know who, who in the family, I assume it was family, um, received the donations?
Yeah.
Okay, would do, could they be contacted to see if they have funds that they would like to, that they collected to contribute to see, to make this happen?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
That's it.
Would one of you mind, well, any three of you that are sitting here, y'all have caution tape somewhere, I'm sure, mind taping off the entrance to the infield from the dugout side? Not that there's, there's no dugout there on the ball field, top ball field.
The upper field?
Yeah.
Yep.
And at some point, I don't, I'm gonna talk to Steve, but I'd like to comb that off with caution tape once he peels it.
The, the infield itself?
Once.
With some like grade stakes.
Yeah, if we can, I don't, he hasn't been up there yet, I gotta go pull the bases, but if we can caution tape off the entrance to the chains, or the chain like fence there so that we don't have people in and out of there once we start peeling it, I would appreciate it. Whoever wants to, whoever gets up there first, I guess.
I'll take care of it. I'll take care of it.
Um, that's it for me. Jake?
I got nothing.
I have a thing that I forgot to mention. Is that okay? Masking out. Jake's like, sure, it's okay.
Don't look at me, you're him over there.
Check it with the chair, check it with the chair, yeah. Um, I did get pictures texted from um the hatch on the road off East Madison, Maple Grove. Um, somebody said it's, um, I don't know if it was that heavy rain that we hit, but it's half getting half chewed up again, the, thank you for filling it, but also to let you know, it's already. I think the rains kinda started to take it out again already, so.
I now, you, thank you for, you sparked something in my head, my list. Um, in reference to Maple Grove, East Madison.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I talked with the head engineer at HEB just to get an idea of what his end would look like. And he's familiar with the road and the connecting roads and driveways and stuff like that. He figured for us, he said, obviously, we don't have to engineer it, but he recommends you do, because if it fails, then it's on us and we have to foot the bill if we don't have it engineered. He said you'd be looking somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that it surveyed and engineered before you started the road work.
Mm-hmm.
So, that'd be a starting point, but I mean, depending on what they come up with, you're looking at probably. Half a million dollars to fix that road.
Half a million dollars to fix that.
Do you know how wide that apron is?
It's both.
Yeah, it's the bottom of.
When it meets East Madison Road, do you know how wide that apron is?
Yeah.
I I don't.
It's well wider than two lanes, cause if you stage three.
So I'm wondering if we could cut it off and ditch it and just use the asphalt that is there. You know what I mean, that's safer and you're not hitting that one corner.
Right, it's just that one corner, right, yeah.
Right, so if we cut it off and ditch it and just to suggest to the cars not to go that way. Like when you ditch everything else.
It'd be car cheaper.
It's good till you end up in the winter time and the directions set up.
Yeah.
So I I I, in discussing it with him, he said, how many, how many problems have you been addressed with, and I said, the only one, not problem, but you were the one that made the comment about buying that, which I've drug my trailer hitch on or whatever, but. He's like, it's probably cheaper to just keep people to the left.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, somehow make them go that way.
Right. Right, and like, and you do it once, you you figure it out, right, it's like, says it's wide enough, if you don't swing hard to turn that way, you'll stay out of that divot, but I just figured I'd bring a heat.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I hear it every s- every single day, I swear the FedEx guy must be the guy every day.
Yeah.
What a sign, Josh, should stay left.
But even like coming down, straight down it, there is a little bit of a a divot as well, like, I'm obviously, there's the big, you know, the big ditch off to the right, but there is a little bit of a, as you come down and. I do not have a giant truck or anything, I have a midsize SUV and I still kinda, not being on the side, but just even right down the middle still have scraped a little bit, so.
It's water. It's water. Oh, yeah. I do need a plow truck, it's horrible.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
You can't see, I mean, you just hope, I hope nobody's coming, I'm gonna shut your lights off.
So I would have to follow up with the person who kinda eyeballed it, who does, who does surveying work, who eyeballed it and went, oh, that's not as big a problem as it could be. So I'll, I'll get their feedback again and see kinda what they meant by that.
Alright. Linda?
She's got a frigid list, my goodness.
You promise today.
Real list.
Cereal for supper, Josh.
So, which doesn't mean Josh has to go home and make dinner, so it's ready when Linda's on her list.
Cereal will be safer.
Make my pancakes for everyone.
So the April first raises thing, I couldn't find where it was done in a public meeting, I know that it was spoken about in a non-public one time, like the the concept and the idea, and there was a public comment made one time in January, but it was never really a vote of the selectmen to do this. That I can find.
I swear it was, I'll go back and check my minutes.
So, cause, cause if there, if there was, go into my next dot, is that I would have proposed, which I'd still like to propose if that's what you wanna do. Not using April first as the date, maybe making it like the first pay period, full pay period after town meeting, because if you do April first, it lands on a Wednesday, somebody got paid this much on Tuesday and this much on Wednesday, it's gonna kinda be. A little bit of a pain in the neck for for payroll, cause you're gonna have to be changing around.
Agreed.
Um, I guess my next question would be, and would that raise idea, would that be retroactive to the first of the year, or are we starting a whole new cycle where it would be on January to December? Budget, but your pay will go April to March? Is you understand what I'm saying?
I feel like, I, I think it's easier to just keep the pay raises April for the year, because it is. And I'm just, I'm.
We did retro in Ossipie, not trying to keep throwing Ossipie, we did a retro, every year you budget that in. So you'd have three months, once it get approved, April first or whatever, then we just got a retro check that dates back for those eight weeks or whatever, January, February, March.
Cause your budget's for January one to December three.
Correct, so then it it didn't change anything as far as the scope of anything.
It doesn't cost any more money.
It, no, it it's in one hand, not the other, but I mean, it's, it's just easier to do a retro.
Presidential checks.
I think the point is, the, as I understood it, was that the the voters get to approve spending the money that way, right? So that's obviously the point of every town meeting, is to make sure the voters get to approve spending money that way. Um, so I guess if they vote it, then just, uh, just thinking aloud, so approving it is saying, okay, yes, we're approving it, and we're approving. Like retroactive paychecks for everybody who got a raise.
Mm-hmm.
That it's kind of like a lump sum thing.
Well, they're not approving individual raises, they're approving a budget.
Budget.
Yeah.
They approve the budget, the check is there, the money's there.
Yeah.
And if a department head doesn't think somebody deserves a raise and doesn't give it, they don't get a retro.
Right.
So that's their control, but ours is just the overall budget.
Yep, no, I know, but I just, just, just thinking it out loud, that just means that part of that approval process is saying, okay, you know, the raises in in this budget. Well, then basically, there'll be like a a three month lump sum.
Yep.
Back paid.
It always worked, I don't see a.
Cause it's it's that year's budget, so no matter what you do.
It's that year's budget. January to January.
Right, you're, and you don't get the raise. If the budget doesn't go through, like, cause all these raises are contingent on the budget passing.
And then you have department heads saying, yeah, they deserve a raise, or they don't quite deserve that much raise.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not arguing any of that, not arguing, just trying to.
Yep.
Figure it out in my head, so I was talking about that, I guess.
Oh, to me, retro works very well, doesn't it?
I'm not saying it doesn't.
Yes, nope.
Well, like, part of my point to all these questions is that this all need, once it's decided, I think it should be something that's written in the personnel policy as to how, you know, because it's never worked differently than that, and I think that.
Agreed.
How it's done.
Agreed.
All the employees should be informed of how it could potentially work.
Yep.
Um, so I guess we'll start with finding out if it was ever voted on in a public meeting, did you wanna look back at that?
I mean, of course. Do we need to look back, if we're all fine with doing it, the first full pay period after March, we can vote on it tonight.
Yep, I'm I'm bored with that.
And I'm on board with making it retroactive.
Yep, me too.
It keeps the budget cleaner that way.
To me, it does.
Alright, so.
It's easier for everybody.
I will make a motion to have all raises be effective first full pay period after town meeting. And to have the pay be retroactive to the budget pass and add that to our personnel policy.
Can we do those separate?
Sure, I will make a motion to have all raises be effective first full pay period after town meeting.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will make a motion to have pay be retroactive based on those raises.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want abstain, I don't know why.
Okay.
I can't give you a reason, I just wanted to think about that one.
Okay.
It passed anyways, so it's fine, but I just.
And we can add that to the personnel policy.
And I'll make that up and have you guys approve that.
Sign it?
Yep.
Soon meeting. Okay, reviews, so I know that you guys had talked about doing reviews in the last quarter, the way the personnel policy reads it now is that it says they will be done. Not in a specific time period, I guess is how to put it. So, my questions. Um, so the board spoken, does the board review all reviews done by the department heads? So if, when I do Kate, will that be something that you'll automatically see whether or not she gets a raise or not? Or is that something that I should bring to you or review with you whether or not Kate's getting a raise or not, or is that something just between me and Kate?
Like in, like, do you get input on it, or is that where your questions or anything like that?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I mean, it's kind of a bad example, because Kate and I are constantly in contact for, you know, those kinds of things, but yeah, just a generality.
Yeah, correct. For, yeah.
I feel like in practice, like, in, I feel like it's a, not a bad idea to have those available to the select board at least, but.
Well, I guess, but I was gonna say, back when, again, when we did it back in the police days, the selectmen didn't see ours, you know, they could. If they wanna come in and see somebody's value, but it's the department heads, I work with them every day.
Right, right.
You know, you guys know who you are, who you guys are, faults, goods, bads, and then I think it was our responsibility to do the department heads.
Yep. Yep.
Put them, you know, and that's just basically on your budgets and what they do for that, but that's how I would do it.
That makes sense.
Unless it was a pay raise included, because I know that you would like to see, you had said that you'd like to see them done if you were asking for someone for a pay raise.
In which case. Yes, I was a good idea to do it every year, just because it, they get feedback, you know what I mean, like you get to say, you know what? I'd like to even change your job description, I'd like you to start doing this, or you know, like, it's just a good cycle to kinda touch base, and I know we're a small town, and I know it sounds like a lot. But it is just a good idea to touch base, how's things going, let's do a formal review, this is how I think you're doing, you can let us know how you like your job, or do you think you would like to do more of this, less of that? Again, I know, small town, or so many people doing everything, but it does, um, it's good to just have that conversation and then just kinda write it down and. And if, yeah, which I agree with, that if there's a request for a raise associated with it, that the review would be attached, so to speak, for the raise to come before the select board.
Thank you, um, and then when it comes to department heads, who reviews department heads? And part of the reason I ask this is that personally, if someone was reviewing me, I hope they think, I would like to think that they know what I do.
Which is why you have job descriptions.
But there's another, ah, there's another one, because my job description is way out of date and it encompasses like three positions.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, then that fault is on me that I haven't got around to actually redoing that and asking for it to be approved and stuff, but. I. What is the process for department head reviews?
I think it's to make sure that everybody, I mean, every position should have a job description.
Oh, and and they do, yeah.
Good, okay, and then, um, I think at this point for the, for the department heads to obviously review the job descriptions for each employee and, you know, and then for department heads, I feel like, yes.
But who reviews? Yeah.
Should should be the same, that the select board, um.
So to her point, who who's reviewing Chief Chief Hayford?
The select board.
And which one of us saw him work?
Please.
What was it, I didn't hear what she said, which one of us and then?
Which one of us is watching him work and seeing him do his job every day?
Oh, okay.
Right, so that, right, there's the the catch twenty two, we.
Bring in your speeding ticket.
None of us, you see him. Once a week maybe in the hallway or at a meeting, but you don't see him on a daily basis to actually review his job description, ever.
So, I worked remotely for twelve and a half years, I never saw my boss, but I produced.
But you don't see his work either.
I see his work out in the community, and again, if we have a job description, and we look at his job description, and he's supposed to be doing X, Y, and Z. We check in every once in a while, because we are the responsible people to make sure that he is doing X, Y, and Z.
I'm not saying it's not upside, it it has to be us, it isn't anybody else, but.
Yeah.
Right, right.
There's somebody else, yeah.
I understand your point, right.
So. So he has a job description, and we, okay, we agree that this is the job, whatever that job is, we agree, you know, Linda will explain to us, this is what I'm doing. This is what I think maybe somebody else should be doing, or this is what I would like to be doing, and we agree, okay, yep, town administrator, this is the job description, we're all in agreement on it, so. Then we are able to say, okay, yep, Lynn is doing this, and she's doing it great, plus.
Is it gonna be done odds of, as a board, or is it gonna be?
I would think so.
What, okay.
Cause we don't have a ton of department heads. And it's not done, you know, like Mike doesn't get it, cause he's an elected official, so, um, it's just hired people.
Yep, there's still quite a few when you.
Yeah, department heads.
When, well, when you don't have, like, well, Heather doesn't have a.
Right.
There's nobody over her, yeah, boy, me, Josh. Wow.
Who?
I don't know, is though, the library trustees take care of their own kinds of things, but, but, um, Jim, there's, you know, so there's.
The library has their own trustee. Yeah, five or six, right?
John.
No, John would be under GPW, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
No raises for John.
Sorry, what are you doing?
Person to agree.
Depends on, yeah. Some of us would say, some of us would be like, yeah, he's great, other people would have their things to say, but he's also good, cause he'll say it right back to them.
Uh, Health and Dental, ABC asked the selectmen to consider increasing the employee contribution, last year it was increased from five percent to seven percent, and the ABC would like it to be contrib. Would like it to be increased again from seven to ten in twenty twenty six.
So before we do anything on that, I asked Linda to take a look at surrounding towns, ABC claims, and I haven't seen anything, I'm sure they've looked it up, that the state average is fourteen percent.
Yes, Joe put together, it's Joe, Joe put together a huge.
And I'm sure Joe's great, I, but I wanna see Conway, Freedom, Eaton, all of the surrounding towns in this area, because if you start raising these for the people here.
Yeah.
Can work that uh philosophy, yeah.
And it's better opportunity in Conway, we're gonna lose them, and I don't wanna do that.
Mm-hmm. We don't wanna work in Conway. We also wanna make sure that.
But just, to a point, I don't, I don't wanna lose good employees, because we hate their.
Right, but also in terms of.
Yeah.
Health insurance, right.
Agreed, and in terms of state average, the state average could be, there's a very dense population making a lot more money down in Manchester and London.
Right. Right, 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 the southern part of the states, I'm assuming, probably.
If you wanna do anything like that, maybe your new hires would have to pay a little more like they do everywhere else, if you hired this date, you pay this much, if you get hired after this date, you pay this much when you get on.
I'll ask Joe if that, or I'll go back and look at Joe's stuff and see if that was part of his thing, or if he, if he didn't collect it already, would he mind doing that?
I don't know.
I don't want to be health insurance.
Nope, would?
I I hate going by the averages on anything, even, well, surrounding towns isn't bad, but even that has its issues, but. If we're gonna go by state averages, I I would like to get paid the state average of a DPW director. I bet the police chief would like to get paid the state average of a police chief.
I think Bob King was always very careful to make sure that.
I hate when nitpick and, well, I just, I don't like nitpick, oh, this average is gonna work out better for us, you know, and and this average is.
Right, right, yeah.
But that's hard, they get, instead of the employees aren't making the state average, but you're charging the state, I get that.
Just surrounding towns is probably, with the valley or whatever, maybe that.
I, I mean, again, I'm.
And I still think it's tough to hit the employees that have been here and up like that, I understand there's gonna be increase, trust me, I'm retired, I'm on a towns retirement, it hurts when it goes up. But your employees were hired under a certain percentage, your new employees, if you have them, I can see up in it. It's just the the guys that have been here, it's tough to do that to them, I think.
Yep, so we'll look at the numbers and see what that dollar amount looks like.
I mean, I would, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to maybe even a smaller increase if that was what it came to, instead of going from seven to ten, do we do seven to eight and a half, or you know, something, just.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think anybody can complain about that.
Right, right, just I don't wanna, I don't wanna just jump from seven, you know, if I was seven to ten, and like you said, the town, Tamworth is charging you five percent, and you're gonna drop open, and someone's gonna.
Oh, yeah.
Linda can find those numbers, but I I wanna hold us to making a decision at the next meeting, so that we can have an idea of going forward for budgets.
Yep, yeah, so if we could even pu- could we put that back on the ABC, I don't know when their next meeting is.
Twenty first.
So.
Put it back on that.
But you guys have an ambulance meeting that night in Freedom.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, right, I won't be there, not really.
Um, no, just for them to, for them to put down, for them to provide us with what other towns are paying, with what other towns employees.
I can get that, Linda's gonna do it.
What you're paying.
I.
Okay.
Oh, I can do it.
Okay, I'm just gonna put that back up then.
I, yeah, connections, I can talk to them, I know.
I know people here.
I mean, I I I'll say as a, as a married to his, um, uh, public servant for twenty one years, our insurance, up, down, up, down, never batted an eye.
I knew the old ministers.
At all, it was just, sometimes we were paying eleven percent, sometimes it was fifteen, sometimes it was back down to eight, if they shopped around, I mean, it really, it really, it was just part of the deal. Honestly, sometimes it wiped out the whole raise for the next two years, you know, it's just part of the deal. And we never, we never filled out an application anywhere else, never changed.
So find out what other towns are and what would that cost look like to someone on a family plan, someone on a single plan, like what would that extra three percent for next year?
Yeah, and we should be, um, by like October tenth or something, we should have our numbers from, um, Health Trust.
Yep.
On all that, um, on the side, I went down last Thursday to the, um, the public hearing that they had, it was really interesting, actually, how the theory on them. Why we get what we have for premiums and that kinda thing, and I'll just one quick anecdote out of the whole thing, anecdote. We, they keep huge reserves in case something like COVID happened, where you're not expecting all these expenses to come through, and because they're, um, a nonprofit. If we end, if they end up with too much stuff, we get it back, and that's what kinda caused the problem a few years ago, cause there was a lot of surplus, so we did get two years where we got checks back from Health Trust, because we, the, if they took in, didn't use enough money. Then COVID hit, and they went through all of their reserves, now they're trying to bring them back up again, and right now they've got forty three million dollars in reserves, but they're trying to get to a hundred and fifteen million in reserves. Then COVID hit and they went through all of their reserves, now they're trying to bring them back up again, and right now they've got forty-three million dollars in reserves, but they're trying to get to a hundred and fifteen million in reserve. And they're spreading it out over five years, and someone from the audience, which I thought was really interesting, said, well, why don't you just give us a hit in one year, we'll just, you know, get to that money thing. Well then, they had a very good theory on why they don't do it, because if they hit us and our premiums went insane, we'd look other places.
Bail, yeah.
And we bail, but the only people that'll be left are the people who have unhealthy pools because they can't go anywhere for less money.
Right.
So eventually, you're not gonna have the people in there anymore to, to hold the premiums and eventually, so it, it would go under basically, if you tried to do it all in one year. So they've been splitting it out over five years, which I thought was a pretty good explanation for why they can't do it that way, so anyways, they hope to have us, and they gave us a range. Three percent to thirty percent is what our increase could be, so yeah.
Slight, thanks for narrowing it down.
Yeah, so, alright, sorry, my next thing was the PFAS thing, I know I had sent you some questions, Joy.
Yes, and I can run through them as fast as I can.
So.
Um, how do we get reimbursement from the grant, that will be in the grant, I have to read it.
Okay.
Um, what is covered by the grant, in the grant, we'll have to read it. Um, installation of the flow rate meter, um, it happened in the fire station, I went a while ago, took a picture of it, I am gonna go back. Um, when I can connect with, um, Mike to get another, um, picture of the status of it, I spoke with Mikey from FX Lines today. Um, he's testing the two last properties, um, for the, that are gonna get the point of systems installed. And test the minerals to help us determine what type of system they will need. I believe we were deemed non, the non, the type that gets us more PFAS-related funding. It may have been deemed too late for us to get into that PFAS funding, however, the state just, just got like a sixty-two mil, million dollar payment for PFAS. Oh, they, from a lawsuit, the state had a lawsuit against the, um, company, so the state just got a sixty-two million dollar payment from three M, I think. So, um, hopefully, some, more of that trickles our way, to be determined. So how, did we, I don't remember what was decided about notifying, um, the.
Nothing was, it was just you guys voted to say.
To do it, they did.
That you could, offered it to employees to have their blood tested, but nothing was ever. It didn't go any further, that there should be some kind of formal notification made to them or not, or?
Um, I don't know who would draft it, but obviously run it by the board before it would go out to employees.
I'll draft it.
Should there be a, somebody who, like, would he, who are you comparing it to, you know what I mean? Like if everybody has it in our system, because we consume so much plastic every day, so.
There's, there's, um, there's databases out there, the, the largest epidemiology study in human history was performed on, um, PFAS. Blocked down in West Virginia, so there is data to determine what's elevated or what's not, and, yeah.
Right, contaminated, yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
Sorry, then my last quick thing was that, questions ahead for, um, Joanna Lyons, if you have him, about the DNCR rail trail. And your November tenth meeting is on Monday because the eleventh is a Tuesday, and we're closed.
Hypothetically speaking, um, should it be on a Wednesday because it's along, it, like, a lot of people? I just, I always think in terms of like the rest of the world, that, I think a lot of, I don't know if people will be out of town. Because they'll take Monday off and make it a, I suppose it matters to us whether or not we're out of town or we can.
Yeah, I, you, you guys can have a meeting, I just.
Wednesday instead of the Monday.
Wednesday doesn't work for me, Monday works.
Oh.
I mean, you don't have to base it off that, I'm just saying, like, Wednesday's a different Monday.
Alright, everybody's go off Jake's.
That's it, right, Monday, no.
Wednesday's tough for me.
Put it out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Monday would work.
Mine's the worst for me.
Okay.
Do it, I won't be here, it's alright, you only need three.
No, I'll be here.
Monday's good.
I believe it's the tenth, okay, uh, thank you, that was me.
You wanna speak for the chief?
Yeah, you gave me a couple talking points. Uh, crime statistics, I'm not sure if you got them up today or if you'll do it tomorrow, but look for those outside of PD. Um, October twenty-fifth, drug takeback day again, bring us all your drugs. And the charger is in the mits, uh, being repaired. They, it's, they had to go to Northern Tire, then to the fabrication shop, and then back Northern Tire. It's in, at the point where it's at the second time at Northern Tire, so once they're done with it, we should have that back on the road.
Okay.
You take all drugs?
Me.
Personally, you're a professional.
No, no liquids, no aerosols, no needles, sharp, and no medical marijuana.
Thank you, just nails.
Chief Prups?
As of last Monday morning, if you didn't know it already, there is a statewide proclamation by the governor of no open burning. She went so far as there's no smoking of cigarettes on state-owned property or in wildlands.
Oh.
That's going great so far.
I can't tell if you're kidding.
Everybody that's coming up doesn't know about it.
Yeah.
Claims to not know about it. You put all the signs up in the world, they don't guarantee comprehension.
Sure.
But, it's a statewide ban, it's got nothing to do with the town, nobody at the town level made a decision, the governor did, and it's not coming down until she makes another decision. And we have no idea. It took, Division of Forest and Lands was lobbying all summer long to get the proclamation, and they finally got it. So they wanted it weeks before it happened. But, in any event, I don't know, it's not looking good, there's no, uh, moisture in the next ten-day forecast, projected forecast. And leaves are falling almost as rapidly as they're changing color.
Yeah.
And that's the danger zone where the ground's already dry. We did get almost two inches of rain locally in this last swing, but it was, when you're down eight and a half inches.
Right.
It, it didn't really, it didn't have the impact that. And, uh, in a related topic, I am starting to get people asking not that there's a dire need right now, but would the fire department come put water in my well? If I needed to? My thoughts are, I don't, I'm willing to do anything to help anybody out, however comma. I don't really wanna put water in anybody's well.
Right.
Because I can't.
Guarantee the safety of the drinking water.
I don't know what residue is, every, every tank that I have is plastic, so it's not a rust issue or anything, but.
Yeah.
We fill those trucks up and they sit for as long as they do until that water is used. So there's, uh, bacteria, whatever, it's just nothing I wanna get involved with. However, I did have one person, and they just said, well, we wouldn't use it for drinking, we just wanna be able to do our laundry, flush our toilets, this and that, and the other. Would it be possible for me to reach out to town council to have a waiver of liability drafted by him? In the event that somebody was insistent that they wanted me to do it? I could have them sign that so that we're not liable, because my concern would be, what am I putting in your well, number one? And could you ever drink out of it again?
Right, right.
Yeah.
I just don't, but like I say, if somebody was insistent and they're willing to sign a waiver.
I, I feel like.
I don't wanna feel like I'm not helping somebody that wants help, I'm willing to help anybody any way that I can.
I, I.
I'm not comfortable.
Right.
I have a question about wells in general, is, they're not, it's not a cistern, it's not enclosed, so doesn't it just go back out? Because it fills from the static pressure, doesn't it just go back in to?
Right, right, I mean, in this case, we're talking about, uh, dug.
Yeah, dug well, but it doesn't stay in there, it has to do with the whole thing going up and down.
Depends on how low the, the water tank is.
I got you, absolutely right, but I guess in their mind, the people that are asking me. If I pull water in there, it's gonna stay, it's gonna be there for me to use, they're not hydrologists or whatever.
I'd be concerned then if they think it's in there, then their well pump can burn out as well, because it can immediately, like I said, go, be dissipated. And then, there's a pump in there that requires water as well, or in their house.
I mean, we could certainly have Cordell draft a, a waiver.
And I would, um, I would, anytime we, like, if we fill a swimming pool too, have somebody sign that going forward, I would recommend.
I have a lot of dirty water in my swimming pool, pond water as well.
Huh?
Swimming pool, they have filtration.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, some people have swimming pools, yeah.
The water we put in that dump tank was fine.
Oh, God, no, it wasn't, it's disgusting.
It's full of murky, it's a fire pot, it's fine. It's organic water.
You couldn't look at the, you look at the window and the tank.
Full of organics.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was organic, it was very organic. I still got in there, but.
Not that I can think of, uh, everybody's anxious for you to set a tax rate though, just in case you're wondering.
Yep.
I get phone calls at least daily.
Yep.
I'm gonna call you tomorrow, I'll just ask.
Yeah.
Still waiting for the guy.
I mean, it's as smart as whether or not there's an exception to a statewide burn ban, I was just wondering, because it's my kid's birthday.
I have brother four at school, happy birthday, kid.
Can I make an exception to a governor's proclamation?
Yes, for fireworks as well on the birthday.
We're still waiting on numbers for.
You still hoping the tenth?
Yeah.
Well, I, if, if he gets into me ahead of time, would you guys be willing to sign out of session the MS one? So I can keep moving and going towards the tax rate and getting that into the state?
Yeah, you need them.
That's just a matter of Chad giving us a number and putting, plugging it into a form and us just signing.
Avatar, uh, the, the program just pops the whole thing out for me, we don't enter any numbers.
But there's no decision making, it's just.
No, it's just, just so that you, yeah, you're, you're supposed to sign it.
Just so you can continue. Yes.
Well, I will make a motion that we sign the MS one out of session to keep the ball rolling.
I'll second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I keep sending them texts.
Josh, you got anything special for us?
No, just, uh, I did ride with, uh, Maggie Coslick from the watershed management, we hired that. Rode all the roads today, in the watershed. This afternoon, that went well.
Were they, like, interviewing you, or like, what, how would, what was that?
No, everybody, she was, I guess she spent all day with, she's been out on the lake, um, with the guys on the watershed. Focus on the watershed committee, and she wanted to go ride with the DPW to see how the roads, uh, how we maintain the roads on the watershed. Our practices.
Okay, so it was kinda like an interview, I guess that's what I meant, it was like what she asked you, yeah, just kinda getting information to put in the report kind of thing, okay. Interesting.
That was good.
Thanks for doing it.
Signature?
You big guy. I get a text last night, I'm like, I don't like this number, and I was like, I'm sorry, who is this? And it was like, no one. What's up, buddy?
Nothing. Like, everything alright? Does all air, nothing?
No.
I said.
Like, okay?
Yes.
Good talk, bud.
Signature. Yes, those are just one. Butter rum lifesavers upstairs. I recommend. Remember the lifesaver storybooks?
Yes.
Kate has butter rum lifesavers upstairs, and it reminded me that every year, my parents got us for me and my sisters for Christmas. Every year I cracked it open, took the two butter rum out, and gave the rest to my sisters. Lifesavers stink except for butter.
Has been delivered.
It has been delivered.
This is me.
Yep.
And then. He's got a bunch of initials and all that kind of stuff on it.
Good luck, you'll be here for an hour.
Yep.
Well, you might as well sign all these and hand them back to him.
Put another banner?
Yep.
It was just too long, we had one, yeah, it's a few more, most of them were just initials. I can do the dates for you if you want.
You're the lucky guy with all the signatures and initials. I'll get to it. Don't rush me, you've only got like four or five more pages to sign, you'll be fine. Oh my goodness, Decker again.
Vibrating?
No. His son's calling my daughter, it comes up on my phone. It's for kids messenger, so I, I have the app on my phone because she downloaded it, so I keep undownloading it, and she keeps downloading it back, yeah. Decker calls me the most.
There I am.
You're always at the top of the list, I always leave you the top one, you're the important guy.
And then you're just gonna make those modifications, so we.
Yeah, I'll change, I'll switch the, with the truck or the driver.
Truck or the driver. I can use change truck.
Well, I double check, make sure the call number's right, then I guess.
I think I did that right.
Okay.
I can see where I.
Was it just one on?
Should you have to switch the truck and the call number?
Or just the driver?
Just, or just, yeah.
I see exactly what I did, I have it all, I have it all right here, but I didn't know what I wrote there, that's what I messed up.
Is that it?
It's it.
He was sole sign, he was sole sign turn in all the ETFs.
I'm sorry?
He's sole sign turn in all the ETFs.
Yes, yeah.
Nice for taking one of the team, Adam.
He was sad to do it.
Basket down there. Yep.
We have your basket tonight, Linda.
I will make a motion enter non-public session for RSA ninety-one, Shay Cole, three, number two, Lucy. Matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax payment or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy if based upon inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. Give a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Cole?
Aye.
Joy, aye?
You're mine.
I'm a mine.
Jake, aye?
Thank you, Josh.
I'm a bunch of pirates.